Motion made and seconded. Is the finance committee your recommendation? Board of selectmen recommendation. Confirming raise and appropriate. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, we're very kind of period with the select and the primary.
I'm totally against it. Move this one closer.
Maybe not.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion out of motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of three hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars from free cash to make the payment on the bond from the police station to reduce the tax rate.
Motion made and seconded. Is our finance committee your recommendation?
Finance committee, yes.
Thank you. For selectmen recommendation.
For selectmen recommendation.
Motion made and seconded with recommendation by both the finance committee and board of selectmen. Any discussion?
So this is something that we've been doing every year since the police station bond became payable. So that's a way to reduce the tax rate.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendations? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to fund fiscal year twenty-two personnel expenses for police covered under the recently settled Dyke and police officers, local three oh six Massachusetts Coalition of Police Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommendation? Board of selectmen recommend.
Motion made and seconded with recommendation by both the finance committee and board of selectmen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article five. Please state your name and address.
Article five, the scene of the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to add the following due honor. Flag bylaw, no person shall fly or display a commemorative or organizational flag other than A, United States flag, B, the Massachusetts state flag, C, the official town flag, D, the official flag of all ranges of the U.S. military and armed forces, E, the POW MIA flag on the town flag pole or any other such man located at the town hall or town on land or town on facility.
Just want to confirm, it's as written in the warrant? There's a couple of different words there. As written in the warrant?
There was an amendment to the general bylaws submitted by a resident petition.
As written in the warrant? Yes, sir. Okay. Motion on the floor?
Sure.
Motion made and seconded. Would anybody like to speak to this motion? Not in discussion yet. Hold on, discussion. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Okay, well, close discussion. For this discussion on this one, we're going to start on our left. We're working our way from left to right. Anyone on the left like to comment, make a motion, speak to this? In the middle, anyone like to speak to this? Right here. Name and address, please.
Kevin Smith, eleven forty-seven St. Street, also chairman of Carson Rec. I have a question as it would pertain to events held by Carson Recreation. If we had an event held by a group or an organization such as Special Olympics who wanted to fly the flag in their event, how would this article affect that?
Is there anyone who can respond to that question? Is there anyone who can respond to that question? Any other comments from the middle?
I, uh, I'm just wondering, um, if, if there's, if there's no flag pole there that belongs to the town or anything, how can they fly the flag? I guess they can fly their own, would be my comment.
Any further comments from the middle? White sweater. Name and address, please.
Dan Higgins, uh, four hundred and eighty-eight at Dyke. So I'm just a little concerned about the wording of this, particularly the beginning phrase, "no person shall." Because that phrase is used over twenty times in the town general bylaws. And every single time it's to restrain the conduct of citizens of Dyke. It's never to restrain the performance of the officers or the officials of the town. It's things like, "no persons of law can intercept it," "no person shall let their dog run off the property." So as written, it's not directed at the town officials. I'm not even sure that it would constrain the town selectmen from choosing to fly on the flag on the town flag pole. Because if it did, it should say that board of selectmen or the selectmen, which is how the general bylaws are posted, would constrain or dictate to direct permission. So as written, this is a restriction not on the selectmen, it's on the citizens of the town, not to display on a flag pole or any other man, any other man, t-shirts, hats, belt buckles, bumper stickers, any other man on any town property, including board town-owned facilities or town hall or town maintained property. So now we're talking about parks, hiking trails, cemeteries, town roads, no bumper stickers with a Democratic or Republican flag or Ford flag or the police chiefs of association of America flag, nothing. So that is how I read this. I don't know that that's how being politics intended, but we don't get to vote on what they intended, we get to vote on what they did right, so. I would just say that this amendment as written is a clear infringement of first amendment rights under the Massachusetts and U.S. Constitution, because it's directed at me personally, telling me what I can and cannot display.
You want to speak back? In the middle? Let's, sir.
My name is John Marcy. I live with my husband on Tremont Street. I've been a citizen of Dyke for over thirteen years. I'm a veteran. I was a lieutenant commander in the Navy. I obviously am gay. I was told that when they were getting signatures for this petition, they threw in the prospect that perhaps not only the rainbow flag, but the Black Lives Matter flag. Incredible indictment. This is obviously anti-gay and racist. My latest job is treating adolescents, and I'm reminded of this being in this high school, of what kind of message we are giving, particularly to young gay and young black citizens of Dyke and Rehoboth, I guess. So, I guess the people with hearts on their front lawn knows that it's a small, I won't say mind, town with a big heart, or straight white people.
Any further discussion from the middle?
Jonathan Gale, twenty-two one, for circle indictment. And I'm raising the question that was somewhat posed by the Carson Rec chairperson as well, which is, for example, the month of July was the month where the American Disabilities Act is separated, celebrated for roughly thirty years now. Does this also mean that we could not, as a town, and I'm asking it as the ATA coordinator, could not fly the ATA flag even one day during the month? Does it also mean that if we have events similarly that were suggested a few minutes ago, if we had best buddies, if we had Special Olympics, if we can't fly their flag during activity, which we want to be able to draw residents of disability to our town to participate in other communities, what do we do? If we put up a banner in the morning on a pole on town property and take it down at night that says, "Best Buddies," or that says, "Special Olympics," or that says, "American Disability Act," because that banner is on town property, is that a violation of what's being proposed to them? If it is, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Is there anyone who can respond to that question? Further discussion from the middle?
Hello, Bill Moore, eighteen thirty-five St. Street. First of all, I wanted to address what has been said about this being somehow racist or divisive. The entire purpose of this flag bylaw is to eliminate divisiveness, although I do respect that, you know, perhaps some, some causes are universally accepted, others are not. And anytime we fly a flag that is of a particular special interest, it creates divisiveness. And the whole point of this is to bring our town together and not to split us further apart upon a hundred different issues. This is the meaning behind this. And I also would like to address the concept of constitutionality, that first of all, the state of Massachusetts already has such a law, prohibits particular kinds of flags being done on all building buildings, as well as seventeen other states that have similar laws. There is no constitutional question about this particular bylaw. It will be reviewed by the attorney general to, if there's any issues with it, they'll hear back then. But there is no merit to the unconstitutional or illegal link of this bylaw. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the middle?
Nicholas Grass, five one St. Street. It makes the statement of amendment in the articles. Does anyone have written what the amendment will be?
No? I'm not really sure of the question, so.
So it seems there's an amendment to this bylaw.
Amendment to bylaws.
But does anyone have a statement on what the amendment is going to be? What are the changes?
It's as written in the warrant. That's what they're adding to our bylaw. They're amending our bylaws to include the flag bylaw. Is that understood? Did that answer your question, sir? Any further discussion? We'll come back, sir. Anyone, anybody, anyone who's not spoken in the middle yet? On the right?
Tom Bellucci, Hopper Street. I'm veteran. I was sergeant. One of the reasons that we look forward to this bylaw is because I've lived in Dyke for ten years, and I know that makes me a newbie, but, um, I've never seen so much division and hate as when, until we started coming up with all these, you know, fly, fly this flag, fly that flag, and special interests started coming out. What is to stop anyone from putting up some other flag that we may all find offensive? The slippery slope is a valid logical argument after all. So we have the, uh, we have this bylaw here to put a stop to that. There is one flag for all Americans, red, white, and blue. To the point of constitutionality, similar laws haven't been challenged, and that one, uh, and, and, I'm sorry, similar laws have stood the test of time. We have that law on books already, we're just bringing it down to Dyke. What we're doing here, to address Mr. Higgins' point, is restraining government, just like the original ten, ten amendments in the Constitution are a chain, a vicious dog, which is government. We are trying to restrain government from putting up the flag of special interest, putting up this flag, that flag, who knows what. Right, you know, that's what we're trying to stop, so stop the hate. We'll get some five.
From the left.
Robert Rendman, twenty-three sixty-three Cedar Street. For, for these two gentlemen who recently spoke, um, very nicely put, my question is this. Why does this bylaw not simply state that we will adopt the bylaw that is in Mass General Law? Why, why is it spelled out? Is it spelled out differently? What are the differences? Why the differences?
So is there anyone on the floor that can speak to why the bylaw proposed differs from what's in the Massachusetts general bylaw?
Yeah, or are they the same? I, I don't know, that's why.
Is there anyone here that can speak to why or if this bylaw differs from the Mass General bylaw?
So I do not write this.
Name and address?
Uh, Bill Moore, eighteen thirty-five St. Street. I do not write this law, so I don't, I can't give you the reasoning as to the why it's different. I can explain the differences in Massachusetts, they're restricting something different, they're restricting foreign flags specifically. So it is not specifically, you can just fly the American bylaws and say, you cannot fly this whole category of flags, and particularly, they're talking about foreign governments. There is a bylaw in Bridgewater, for example, they have something similar for the board of selectmen, the town council down there needs to approve, like if you want to fly a flag, you've got to go through the process and get it approved. I personally, I don't like that idea.
So just further, is that your interpretation of the differences, or is that a?
That is my interpretation.
Your interpretation?
It's because I researched that. Based on my own research.
Anyone else like to respond to that question? Very back right.
To answer that next question, the town has the ability to see whatever the state has, but you cannot go hush about the state has. I'm not sure honestly, but I would feel like I'd answer to, address the issue before us as far as, in my opinion, that most people in here, they turn this into an issue of what actually is not. We're trying to do here, instead of bylaw, to prevent any type of special interest involved in the area just to display a public property, which is kind of the way it's been since the beginning of time. I've been living in this town for seventy years, and you always put your power on your property, you put your property on your property, on somebody else's. And if you allow us to go through, and like most people in this room, or some people, everybody here, there's someone that's gay, and love them very much, I do too, and board members have, this is not an issue of that, it needs to be put in place to prevent any further, you allow one, you're going to have to allow the other, if you don't, it's discrimination. It's exactly what you people here are trying to prevent, because you felt as though you've been discriminated against in the past, if you're still into more discrimination on both sides.
I'd be curious if attorney gay would comment.
So the comments, request was for town council attorney gay to respond or make comments on them?
First of all, my role is not to be a constitutional lawyer. I won't pass the judgment on its constitutionality, because that's the role for the attorney general. I did say, when I looked at the more articles, that it had proper form and content, and that is, I still think that's fine. I think it'd be, as I read the bylaw, in my, my interpretation of what I read, I read it to be what most people have said, and it's simply limiting the flag flying to the five or six deems the flags that can fly. And therefore, taking all discretion, because it's very clear, and I've been asked this in other places that I happen to represent, not necessarily in Dyke, but if you open up, somebody wants the flag, flag A, you can't say something about flag B, you have to let them all go, because now you're really censoring. So if you have a bylaw such as this, I think the real reason it does, it prohibits diversity of flags, and once you allow one, it's very difficult to allow, to say no to another. It's like renting a hall to somebody because they want to have a party that wouldn't be something we want to see. You can't say, well, you can use a public building for that, but you can't use it for this. You have to have, this type of bylaw is that very limited purpose. So I think it, if it passes, the attorney general will take a look at it, and they have to by statute, that's their job, and they'll decide whether it needs to be constitutional or not, or it doesn't. I believe there are others similar to this that have passed, but that doesn't necessarily mean the exact wording of this one would be, and that's up to them. Basically, that's what I would say.
Any further comments? Just to start back on the left and go back one more time, on the left.
Hi, Rowan Kelly, at one seventy-one Councilway. This is my first time on meeting. I am literally shaking. I think this is actually a little bit here, but, um, this is something that I feel like I just have to, I can't leave until I have to say this. As a new resident in this town, I moved here within the last year and a half, I had a baby in this town, our second son, and I had never felt more divided moving into a new town, let alone raising a young family, than I had moving into this town specifically. I have to say that selectmen, for example, Chris, did an incredible job of welcoming me and my family when literally no one else did. I found like-minded people because of our selectmen reaching out across any barrier of not having someone to get to know me myself and my, my family as new residents. The ultimate gaslighting of pretending that this bylaw is supposed to bring unity is sickening. When I drive down the street every day, I see one divisive flag after another divisive flag after another divisive flag coming from the people who wrote this bylaw. If anyone is hanging up offensive flags, it's y'all. We can put red hearts on our front lawns all damn day, but if we can't have these difficult conversations with our hearts beating in our chest, I'm literally burnt out by it exactly, but this, we have to be able to have these difficult discussions. We have to be able to be adults and show up for our kids and, and each other. I'm new here, I don't know what I'm doing, I feel like I got a target on my back since the day I moved in, because I don't think like the majority of the people in this room probably. But I think different than you, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing for people to feel and think differently than you. It's a good thing to celebrate differences. And I agree, I agree with so many of the things that y'all said tonight. I agree that it's a slippery slope. I agree that the approval process needs to be looked at. There's clearly no one has done their homework. You can't even answer basic questions about this bylaw. And it's affecting people on a deep-rooted level, and you say it's without unity? I'm sorry, but I call BS. And I don't know any of you, and y'all don't know me, but one thing, I swear to God, I will show up and speak my truth and speak even though my voice shakes, because my kids, I'm not giving up that half I want. I love my front porch, I love my neighbors, and sugar treating, that shit is awesome, and I'm building a family here. Our kids deserve better, and I'm tired of no one's working together. We're better than this. That's all.
Mr. Moderator, Buffalo, one fifty-eight Cedar Street. And I did a lot of work in order to produce this bylaw. I ran it by a lot of people. We changed the wording many, many times. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm playing one on TV. I appreciate all you people, every one of you who showed up today, whether you support this article, or you don't support this article. You're a true American, you're showing up here today. As far as the article offending gays or transgender, I want you to know personally, I took this petition around. I've had gay people sign this petition. I have gay relatives. I like gay people. It's nothing against the gays. It's nothing against any minority. We're all Americans. I'm sure that the United States military, alongside every kind of people you can imagine, I love them all like brothers. That's all I have to say.
Nancy Fuglass, six thirty-one, Ray Terrace, not Dyke. This issue was raised when I was still on the vote of selectmen. The first thing I said was, you can't fly any flag on the town flag pole, because there's flag etiquette, there were flag rules. You don't fly it on the flag pole with the U.S. flag. They had these special legislation, the POW MIA flag to come across the country. What I said had to be done was, we needed a policy, a procedure, something, so that anybody and everybody who wanted to fly a flag would be treated equally. To reiterate what's already been said, you can't pick and choose, you can do it, you're not going to be allowed to do it. We talked about the flags each month. Well, there's only twelve months in the year, folks, if you actually go online, you'll find out, there's lots of flags that can observe on a monthly basis, so that's a bit of work. As a result of that, the Human Rights Commission Committee was wrong. I supported doing that based on the presentation that the committee from Easton made, because they had a committee that, when I listened to the presentation, really were able to do some things in Easton that were appropriate. Unfortunately, our committee wasn't successful. Everything was focused on the flag. If nothing else happens here tonight, you're going to vote your conscience, this isn't about hatred of any group, of any citizen, or anything else. I have very strong feelings about the flag. I'm talking about the red, white, and blue one that's recognized around the world. It's hard because I had relatives in rural watch you in D-Day, in the Pacific, three brothers from Vietnam, thank God they all came back, lost two since then. But the fact of the matter is, Dyke is a small town with a big heart. I know what the heart means, it's in my driveway, it's got a name on it, and he was a Deafos, uh, uh, veteran. If nothing else comes out of this tonight, you're going to vote your conscience, what you truly believe in. Personally, I'm going to vote for this, because I think it needs to go to the state attorney general to make a decision. If she says, nope, it's going to come back, then you'll have another shot at it, and you'll have some, hopefully, advice on what was wrong with it. By the same token, if the attorney general says, it's okay, far as I'm concerned, it's okay. I've had to go to the AG three times on other issues, and every single time, it came back, they're okay. So vote your conscience tonight, folks, and let's send us off to the AG for a ruling. Thank you.
Any further questions? From the right?
Hi, George Carty, two thirty-four Lincoln Avenue. I just have a question in the.
I just have a question, in the way it's written, and maybe Dr. Azar can answer this question. Where it says that including this list is town-maintained property, and the flags are very specifically listed, does that cause any problems for the school with, say, the Falcon flag that they fly at Pepperellies, or, you know, any other flags that they might use for educational purposes? Is that something that somehow should be written into the wording? It's a really question for Dr. Azar, yes.
To restate it, I'll ask for anyone to speak to that, if you can address it. Are the schools considered town-owned municipal buildings?
The, I would infer, of course, the legal expert here, just called me by surprise, as you could, I was just saying, but Dyken Elementary School and Dyken Middle School are both owned by the town.
Thank you.
And the high school is owned by the regional school district. So that's the best I can do for you folks.
Okay. And currently, do you display any flags, flags that are defined within this bylaw?
The only flag that we fly out of all five school buildings is the United States red light and blue flag.
So you fly that one of five, do you fly any other flags in Dyken Town School Buildings?
The flag poles at each one of, until--
Do you display any flags other than the flags listed in the bylaw, and that you're aware of, and I know you may not know?
Could you share what the flags--
They are defined as the Massachusetts state flag, the United States flag, the official town of Dyken, the official flags of all branches of US military, armed forces, the POW MIA flag, POW MIA flag, or a town flag, on a town flag pole, or other such manhood in the town hall, town homeland, or town maintained spaces?
On the outside of the building, it's the United States flag. On the inside of the building, as you can see, we have the Massachusetts flag and the United States flag. That's symbolic of all Lombard buildings. Outside, flag pole, the only one I'm aware of, would be the United States red light and blue flag.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Make a motion to put it to a vote. Second.
Motion made and seconded, put to a vote. Call the question. Non-discussion, non-suspicion. So I'm, first of all, for a hand, a voice vote on this, if I cannot determine, we will go to a hand vote on this. All in favor of Article Five?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Pires, Chairman of the Board of Health. First, I'd like to address--
There's no motion on the floor yet, I'll take a motion. Article Six.
Moderator. I move that the town vote raise an appropriate sum of $11,142,081 to additionally fund the account 010-0-510-0000-50-5106, personal expenses, salary, health agent, due to the proposed increase in wages from $37.04 an hour to $38.86 an hour, an increase in work hours from 28 to 35 for the remainder of fiscal 2022. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectment recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend--
Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee--
Motion made and seconded, recommended by both the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. Someone like to speak to this motion?
Mr. Moderator. I'd like to address the fact that while we're here this evening, instead of bringing this to the annual town meeting, much prior to the annual town meeting scheduled for June of 2021, the Board of Health had discussions with the previous town administrator regarding an employee contract or agreement for the health agent position that would outline wages, hours, job duties, and responsibilities. At the time, the town administrator had plans on leaving, so unfortunately, a contract or agreement was never reached prior to the annual town meeting. Also at that time, the rate of $38.86 per hour and 35 hours had been the recommendation from the three-member Board of Health for the health agent position of consideration at the annual town meeting. As the town was finalizing articles for the annual town meeting, the former chairman of the Finance Committee recommended and requested that this article be put off until the fall special town meeting, so that a contract or employee agreement could be created, and this was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Board of Health, that we bring into this evening's meeting. In preparation for the upcoming special town meeting, the following individuals met on two occasions to reach agreement on wages and hours of board. Those people were chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Ken Pachico, myself, town administrator Mike Pollan, and our health agent. It was agreed by all present after the second meeting, that at this time, the duties and responsibilities will remain unchanged. It was also agreed to accept and put forward a request for a 35-hour work week at a rate of $38.86 an hour on the special town meeting mark for the health agent position. That's why we're here this evening, had a request of the former Finance Committee Chair. We did a work out of salary study of eight surrounding communities with 20,000 population or less. This was done in the early summer of 2021. Those towns included Dyken, Creighton, Acushnet, Boguth, Rainham, Seacombe, Swansea, and Somerset. All these communities, except Dyken, are working 35 hours a week. Their average annual salary for FY '22, $73,456.66. The average hourly wage for fiscal year '22, for these eight communities, is $41.1. The Dyken position works 28 hours, $37.04 an hour, and is the lowest paid of these eight. If approved, the Dyken position will be $38.86 an hour, with the annual salary of $71,652.26. For fiscal year '23, this will be the salary, and that is an increase of, give you the exact number. As chairman of the board, I'm here just about every day, and I see the activity in the office. 25 hours, 28 hours is just not enough to get the job done that needs to be done in this town. The salary is far, far less than most other health agents. In these times, it is very difficult to get a health agent for under $80,000. So as we go forward tonight, I just want everyone to remember that we're voting on the position and not on the person. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the left?
I didn't hear the part, are these funds to be raised and appropriated, or are these to be transferred from existing funds already available?
Raise and appropriate.
Thank you.
Further discussion from the left? From the middle? Mr. Moderator.
Now I've got my Stormwater agenda in her eye. At 28 hours of the health agent, three hours a week is supposed to be for the Stormwater agent. If you have any idea what's in our Stormwater notice of intent to the EPA, the MS4 report that we send every year to the EPA, you must be wondering, how does anybody get it done in three hours a week? I'm asking you to support increasing these hours at the rate that's important to you, because I can tell you that the services that are rendered to the Stormwater Committee by the Stormwater Agent, who is also the health agent, are those of a professional engineer. I think most of you know, you can't hire a professional engineer for the amount that's being recommended tonight. And I can also tell you that if we had to hire on a contract basis a professional engineer, number one, they wouldn't come for that rate. Number two, it's additional money that could cost the town significantly increased. Number three, you can't get them at the drop of a hat. And if any of you are aware of the development that was proposed on the Sankt Hansa River in time, it was through the efforts of our Stormwater Agent that we were able to get what needed to be done up there, which was stop pollution of the Sankt Hansa River, which this town has water rights to, as does the town Somerset. But the package and information that was delivered to the town conservation commission, I could weigh in pounds, because it was not only a three-page letter, but every citation in that letter was backed up with, that was EPA rules, regs, engineering material. And I want you to know, all of that material that was submitted on that case is also viewed by an engineer from the town of Somerset who efforts to be the water supervisor commissioner, and he kept saying, right on, you're on the right track. We accomplished what we set up to do. What I'm asking you to do is to consider what I'm saying to you. If I don't have the services of an engineer, and by the way, folks, we aren't paying you as an engineer, if I don't have those services, you're going to duck the Stormwater Committee. And we're the ones responsible for every development that goes on in this town as far as enforcing the rules and regulations, not only that this town is fully in place, but those of the DPA and the EPA. So I just want you to consider that, and to think about this. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the middle? Back right, we have a shirt.
I just wanted to make a simple observation to be heard when we just heard. So what I heard was a conflating of two concerns or two needs for the town. One is for a health agent, the other one is for an engineer. We're talking about a health agent right now. If you need an engineer, you also need to get an engineer, not try to pay a health agent an engineer's rate. That's all I can say.
Any further discussion from the middle? From the right?
Give it one of these 16, 3rd Street. Why is your time vote with pay rate and the number of hours increased with the same request? I mean, if you need more hours, then okay, we can approve more hours, but why do we also need them for the salary increase?
Speak to why, always. I would increase everything.
Certainly, not knowing the future. As I mentioned a moment ago, it's very hard to get health agents for under $80,000 an hour. Maybe $85,000, $85,000 an hour. If indeed, we can't reach agreement on a decent salary for the work that the current health agent is doing, then I can't say whether he was staying employed here or not. But if the health agent leaves, we lose our technical ability to do the stormwater work that Mrs. Blart just mentioned. We'll have to pay a whole lot more than $38.86 an hour. So for those of you who work in the workplace, and like a contract, or whatever method of payment you receive, I'm sure it will all go in to try to get a higher pay rate at one point or another, all I'm suggesting is, I can't guarantee the future if this article doesn't pass.
Did that answer your question? Can you speak frankly to why we're increasing all the hours and rate? That's the explanation. Any further comments from the right?
Jessica Hershey, 2440 Chestnut Street. I'm wondering if Mr. Pires could clarify for me in the statement that he read prior, that there would be no change in his duties and responsibilities, yet we're increasing his hourly rate and the number of hours. And in addition, I'm curious if what Mrs. Blart had mentioned, if his involvement with the Stormwater Committee is included in his roles and responsibilities as for him.
Is there any change to his duties with the increase in hours or rate?
Not at the present time, but we have determined after the studies we've done, that this position is grossly underpaid as compared to what the health agents, as a matter of fact, they did mention, but at a world disappointing. There was a study done, again, in the early summer of 2021 by Rockland Mass Health Department. The study included 44 citizen towns. In 38 of the 44 communities, the health agent works 35 or more hours weekly. Out of the 44 communities, 37 health agent physicians do not have the responsibility of solid waste collection and disposal. The town of Dyken position is one of the seven that does. Also of the 44 communities, 40 health agents do not have the responsibility of recycling, collection, and disposal. Dyken is one of the four that does. The average annual salary of these 44 citizen towns is $84,433.15. I believe that the increase is fair and just, and it brings them up to par with what other local health agents are getting for salary.
Did that answer all parts of your question? Would you like to see the Stormwater report? Is that included in the current job description?
The last time I checked, it was a separate job description for the Stormwater Agent. He, quite frankly, always put together as health agent, but in honesty, he was, let me put it this way, Stormwater Committee was allotted three hours per week of his time to review plans to act on issues that come up. Every project that comes before the Stormwater Committee, whether it's a soul farm, whether it's proposed housing development, whether it's actually an individual home, if you disturb over 35,000 square feet, it has to come before the Stormwater Committee. You have to have a plan drawn by an engineer. You have to have a plan drawn by an engineer. The health agent, because he is a PE and also is a member of the stormwater committee, is the only person qualified to look at those plans and advise the stormwater committee if what is being proposed is appropriate. If he says there's a problem here, he's got to respond. No one else on the stormwater committee is qualified to do that. So that's why I mentioned, without this individual on the stormwater committee who is using his skills and his license as a PE, should not be compensating this one. But what he, in effect, gives to the stormwater committee is the credibility it needs to move forward. If--
Mr. Blart, just to confirm. So currently, out of the 28 hours worked a week, three of those hours are dedicated to stormwater.
Yes.
And that is in his job description? That's the way it's written.
That's what's--
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
That three hours of the 28 hours currently are slated for stormwater a week in his job description? But yes, three hours a week of the 28. How do you want it to look like? Any discussion from the left?
Yes. I've been pretty consistent in my disagreement on this position. From the very beginning, I questioned the organization of this position. We have a person that's serving as a stormwater engineer. He's also advising the town on other engineering issues. He's a poor health agent. My question regarding to that is the planning board has an engineer for them that they use. I hear that Mr. Pellings is the only one that can make these decisions. Has anyone worked with or spoken to the planning board? See if they could share those engineering services? I also question, as someone who's worked in the public health field for over 30 years, how an engineer, the logic, are I an engineer advising public health facilities? Or even supervising the non-ramble who came on board recently in this town? What is his expertise in regarding to that? The other question, and it's something you need to ask as taxpayers who work for the money that you pay for your taxes. This increase, from what I've been told, is one of the largest made in a special meeting for a salaried position. And I have deep concerns around it. And it's also an unusual request at a special meeting. Usually something else. What do I forget at town meeting? At the annual meeting? Thank you.
Any further comments from the left?
I'd like to comment on what Mr. Blart told us, stated here. He's correct. We don't like to do these at special. Usually because we like to angelize the cost and we know what the full impact of salary increase is going to be, not only for the current year, but upcoming years. Mr. Pires gave us that figure. It was $16,875 and some change. Okay, so we know what the annualized cost is. This warrant article is for this current year, which is a little bit more than $11,000. So we all now have a full picture of this. The only reason that we're doing this at special, and I'm very thankful for the turnout because this actually looks bigger than what we had at annual. So I have no concerns now. We don't remember people that we have contributing their vote to this. But the only reason we actually asked to do this at special was because we were not certain of our financial situation at annual town meeting. Okay? So yes, this is a one-off, but it was at the request of both us and the Board of Selectmen. Okay? Us being the finance committee. Personally, for me, if we lose somebody of this quality to some other town, we're still not paying at average, we're below average. But if we lose somebody of this quality and we have to hire a contractor to fill in it part-time, until we can hire somebody, or if we have to bring in engineering services, those are both going to be way more expensive than what is being proposed here.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moderator.
If I could also speak on this, Camp Chico, 1860, Monk Street. I support this article. I've had the opportunity mostly on a weekly basis to go to the board of health and see the work that he does, our region does. And I think the town of Dyckman deserves a full-time board health agent and it serves to pay a reasonable amount of salary for this person. For example, as everybody knows, we've had another growth in town. In September, we had to do 16 weeks' work, which is about average two hours per week. So that's already up to 32 hours. I fully support this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Back right?
Susan Pritchard, 319 Tremont Street. I was wondering, is it common practice within the day to give a raise in the middle of the year like this?
So I think they just looked at that and said, this is not a common practice, but due to the recommendation during the annual, that is why it's being proposed this time.
So it's never been that before? This is the first time?
And I, they did not say never. They said it's not--
It has been done to the past.
But it has been done to the past. Finance committee confirmed.
Well, then, I guess this is kind of a moot point. My next question would be, I don't know when his contract is up, but generally, that type of negotiation is done at the time of renewing the contract. And if he felt that his duties in that job exceed what he--
So I'm going to call this out first. It's not about the person right now. We're talking about the position and the hours for the position. It's not about the individual.
I'm not talking about the position.
Okay, go ahead.
So maybe that position needs to-- or if he came or whoever-- for that contract, needs to be expanded as far as duties go when the contract is to be renewed, which I don't know when it is. Do you know when it is? Is it a year?
The contract's specific to the individual, not the position. So that's, we won't speak about his specific contract. And he doesn't have one, I'm being told. No, we're not going to talk about the individual on the floor. We're going to talk about the position. That's what the article's about. There's been a motion to move to question the seconded. It's a non-discussion motion. Move to vote. Going to call for a votes wait first. If cannot be determined, we move to a hand count. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Going to move to a hand count. The checkers, please come forward and sit at the doors. Okay, we're going to move to a hand vote. First vote will be if you want to approve. So if you're in favor of the article as presented, the counters will, you're going to raise your hand, hold your hand up until the counter passes your aisle. All in favor? Please raise your hand now. All opposed? Okay, I have the vote. But prior to that, I just want to make a note that there was a call to question at the end there. Typically, a call to question is a vote. So I did miss that. So that's my apologies on that one. So typically, when there's a call to question, it's a non-discussion motion, but it is a vote. We did not vote on that motion called to question. So my last comment, was there anyone who did not get to speak to that motion prior to the call to question? That didn't speak? All right, I believe we gave everyone ample opportunity to respond to that. So the call to question, we just-- but going forward, we'll make sure we have a vote on any call to question. So I'll vote for Articles-- where are we on? Article six. This is not a two-thirds vote. This is the majority carries. So on Article six. Yes, we had a count of 83. No, we had a count of 71. Motion carries. Article eight. Article eight. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from pre-cash the amount of $10,057.50 to reimburse the sewer enterprise fund for unused fiscal year 2021 employee health insurance premiums, budgeted and paid to the town of Dyckman.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to reappropriate the sum of $30,000 from a special article in the count number 010-1-241-0000-21-5850 inspectional vehicle initially approved for the purchase and lettering of a 2020 Ford Escape hybrid vehicle in Article 11 of the special town meeting on November 16, 2020, and to transfer an additional sum of $10,000 from pre-cash for a total sum of $40,000 to be expended by the building commissioner to purchase and letter one hybrid vehicle to be used for inspectional services.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Back right corner.
Hi, Tom Mulchigan, Palmer Street. My question is, why does it have to be a hybrid vehicle? Couldn't we save a heck of a lot of money if it was just a regular gas vehicle? Even in light of the fact that gasoline is now really expensive? I wonder why. However, does it have to be a hybrid vehicle? It's unproven technology and it's exceedingly expensive. And it also doesn't do what it says. It's not, it's not like hybrid vehicles don't have carbon footprint. Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak to why a high rate for a personal vehicle?
So I wanted to give my opinion on which one's better than the other. I just wanted to answer Mr. Mulchigan's question straight out. It's a hybrid vehicle because that's what the original article had stated. So that's why it's on for us again. Because that was the original article that passed on November 16, 2021.
Any further discussion? Left right?
And I'd like to point for Bill Moore, 1835, Smith Street. And I'd like to point out that the original appropriation was for $30,000. This is adding an additional $10,000 to purchase the special vehicle. It's, as Mr. Mulchigan said, it's too expensive.
Any further discussion on the floor? Right?
If we were already approved to buy vehicles for $30,000, Bill Mallow, 1693, Palmer Street. Thank you, sweetheart. We already voted to approve $30,000 in that order. Throw in more money on top of that. Why didn't we have the full amount voted in the first round? So let's keep the white members.
So, um, when we were presented with this app at the last meeting, that was the cost of the vehicle that we've been stating in the warrant here. And it was proved that vehicle was no longer available when we went to make the purchase. Subsequently, we've seen not only housing prices increase, but we've seen car prices increasing. In addition to that, I'd like to refute that electrical vehicles are not a proven technology. They are. Secondly, fuel costs are going up. Thirdly, we have charging stations down here at Town Hall, which is where this vehicle would be plugged into. And so the efficiencies gained in the fuel cost would be offset. We are also mandated to go through the state's purchasing process as well. So we have to buy from their buyers, if you will. And this is the price that we get quoted, and that's why we have to ask for additional funds at this point in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the floor? Make sure that's clear. Any discussion from the electric? Go ahead.
Okay, just be quick. You said a lot of words there. And so this expensive vehicle got more expensive since we voted previously, so we're just gonna pay more? That's basically what I hear.
So we can look to purchase a regular gas vehicle in light as well, which for the, I believe, would be probably still in the thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar range, and we're not asking for a whole lot more. Carbon footprint, we are a green community now, I believe. There are doctors and professionals. Green community as well? So this further cements our place and allows us to get grant funding for more green projects?
I think I heard the solution is that we should be looking at what the price of the gasoline is. So I'm gonna motion to table. We have an opportunity to do a round of discussion right now. Thank you. Yeah, no further comment there.
Gentlemen, a problem? He's right.
Hi, Red Oil, seven-thirty, Somerset Ave. Question about the hybrid vehicles. We're all talking about a hybrid vehicle. We have maintainers on staff to fix traditional vehicles in our garages. When this hybrid vehicle does break, how are we gonna get it maintained? And who is maintaining it? And of course, it's gonna be more than a traditional gas vehicle, if you will, from our maintenance department mechanics that we have on hand at the town garage. I don't think that there is any available mechanics that are certified to work on a brand new hybrid vehicle. When it does break, how are we gonna address these costs of a hybrid vehicle if we don't have those maintenance personnel on hand?
The vehicle, the gentleman had stated, how would the mechanic service a new hybrid vehicle? My understanding is the vehicle would be under warranty for several years. So the vehicle would not be serviced at that point by the mechanic. It would be serviced by the company that made the vehicle.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Coolard.
And just to add to that, the town mechanic, in effect, is actually taking courses and studying how to handle electric vehicles.
Further discussion from the floor? No.
Good evening, Dave Rosa, three-two-three Lincoln Ave. There was a reference to the previous discussion of voting on this thing in the past. And I remember those discussions. In my opinion, they were highly contrived then. And now your argument for ten thousand dollars more is once again highly contrived. Now, I don't appreciate the elected officials or the other staff bringing us down this primrose garden path. This is forty thousand dollars. Now, you had at your disposal a reasonable, I think it was a grand marquee that was used by another department. You had it at your fingertips, and you let it slip through. And now that's part of your excuse to ask for more money. I think you should issue your sentence.
Any further discussion from the floor? Back right this.
Bob Adams, South Street. In the past, if all these usual public vehicles were turned into the town, where are you gonna vote tonight on police vehicles? Or maybe a public vehicle being turned back in? We're not with the purchase of all right of inspection vehicles, sound like?
Is there a question that I've stated as long as this is stated? Any further discussion from the floor?
I'm in Calhoun, three-fourteen Lincoln Ave. I'm not really well versed in the issue, but I do think that it speaks well for the town that we have green issues in mind. I would ask you why we're not considering electric vehicles, since both the state and the federal government have goals. And at some point, they'll be required. So I'm in favor of a hybrid vehicle, and obviously, the cost of everything has gone up. So it's disappointing that it wasn't purchased in the last year, but I am in favor of the increase in the hybrid vehicle. And I would be in favor of electric if you were considering that.
Any further discussion from the floor? Motion made, motion to table made and seconded. Motion to table to be made and seconded on the floor is a non-discution motion. Goes directly to a vote. Requires a two-third vote. It's a non-discussion motion. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass. I'll call for a voice vote. If I cannot distinguish whether two-thirds majority has been made, we're moving to a hand vote. All in favor of a motion to table? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion table fails. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I would regret the hand vote.
Denied. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I believe you can deny it. Call.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can deny it. I'll confirm with town council, please. From where? Article seven, is there any further discussion on Article...? No, Article seven, I apologize. Article eight, any further discussion on Article eight?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we hear from our building inspector, who's a non-voter.
Did he not speak? He's allowed to speak. Would you like to speak to the article? We do not.
Hello, hello, buddy. It's great to see everyone here. Seriously, usually we have like twenty-five or thirty people, so this is great. A democracy at work. So I want a vehicle. The one that I have has over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles on it. I actually refuse to drive it anymore because it's just that type of vehicle. As far as whether or not I should have a hybrid, an electric, or an energy efficient vehicle, that's up to you, the taxpayer, to go find it. We are a green community. At first, I was actually opposed to being a green community. I've actually embraced it over the past few years and learned that there are a lot of benefits to it. So yes, I know this vehicle is expensive. It is forty thousand dollars. Compared with gas vehicles, it still costs us thirty, thirty-five per year. Now, whether or not that means I get a new one or handing down from another department, again, it's up to you. But I do need a new vehicle.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Selectmen rocks.
I just wanted to add, this vehicle would be used not only by the building commissioner, but also by the conservation agent and also the health agent as well.
Any further discussion?
David Carter, fifteen-ninety-five Lincoln Ave. I'm just curious to know what the overall annual mileage that would be driven. I mean, you know, we're a growing town. Conceivably, there's gonna be a lot more inspections happening. And another forty vehicles, I think he's gonna have to run out a hundred visits, fifty, two-hundred times to go look at either the, you know, the accommodation, the electric, whatever.
Mr. Commissioner, now, how many miles you put on a daily basis?
Sure, so just myself, I earn about ten thousand miles a year running around town. However, we, as Selectmen of Office said, we have two other departments. The health department's been using the vehicle for the past year, two years, and a motivation agent will be using it. So I anticipate that miles will probably at least double, or be doing probably twenty-five to thirty thousand miles a year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, moving to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That is too close to call. Call for a hand vote? The checkers, please come forward. Alright. Same drill as before. Upon the first vote, is if you are in favor of the article, please raise your hands. Keep your hands up until the checker passes your eye. All in favor? Okay, I'm gonna ask everyone to keep your hands in the air and raise them as soon as we say that. Keep your hands until the checker passes. If you had a missed count on that, because people raised their hands after. All in favor, please raise your hands and keep them in the air, please. This is all in favor. Confirm. Thank you. All opposed? Raise your hands, keep them in the air, please. Article eight, in favor, seventy-six. Opposed, seventy-five. Motion carries. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash some not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars to be expended by the board of selectmen for the purchase and installation of one high-efficiency HVAC unit in Town Hall. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with a finance committee recommendation. Is there board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Board of selectmen recommends. Did everyone hear that article? Okay, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ooh.
Motion carries. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars and transfer for free cash additional sum of five thousand dollars for a total sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be expended by the board of selectmen for purchase a cybersecurity insurance policy and all necessary equipment to establish a secure two-factor authentication process for Town and employees.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with recommendation from both the finance committee and board of selectmen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ooh.
Motion carries. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, gentlemen. Mr. Moderator, gentlemen. Twenty-one, twenty-four, time is right. I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash a sum not to exceed forty thousand dollars to be expended by the Dyke Trails Committee to fund a feasibility study to provide viable options for initial concepts and initial concepts to connect the future two-mile DCR Sweets Mill Trail to the north and south with on-road and off-road trail options to connect the Town of Dyke to the Todd River Trails Network north across the Three Mile River to Town Hall in south along the waterfront to Somerset.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Did finance committee make recommendation? No. Motion's been made and seconded with a recommendation by the board of selectmen, no recommendation by the finance committee. Would anyone like to speak to this motion?
I would like to, Mr. Moderator.
Please.
Good evening, everybody. gentlemen.
Uh, Jeff Cavalllo with the Dyke and Trails Committee on the chair, and I'm joined by, uh, Rachel Conti, uh, Karen Als, and Rachel Biggans with the Trails Committee. Uh, what we have here before you tonight, uh, is we are, uh, working as a group of volunteers for the town of Dyke, for, for you folks, and, uh, we want to, uh, fund a, something called a feasibility study. And what that, what that's going to do is, that's gonna allow us to have the information we need as we go forward and try to get grants, uh, from the state and from the federal government to, uh, to put trails in our town. Uh, I mentioned in the article that the Department of Conservation and Recreation is putting a two-mile trail. Uh, that's gonna happen in the next few years, and that's happening, uh, along the Sweet Knoll property. So what this article is requesting is, uh, money so that as a town, we can fund a, an engineering firm to come in and, and give us options, uh, for how we can connect where they're terminating in the north over to the, over to the city of Ton, and also over to the south. Uh, what this is gonna give us is, like I mentioned, uh, it's an harness of information as we go forward and get grants, because some of the grants specifically request or ask if we have a feasibility study on hand, and that's what this is gonna give us. Thank you, thank you.
Is there any discussion? The middle?
We have a number of, Dave Rosso, three-two-three Lincoln Avenue, right Dyke. We have a number of trails and whatnot in town right now. By the way, I'm running down Parks and, only your commissioners are the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, and I might add, I think that the trails are gonna shoot there, whatever their trust are, should be folded under the, uh, Dyke, uh, under your Parks and Recreation.
Speak to motion, please.
I'll speak to the motion. I, I, you know, this is forty grand for some engineering study, but, uh, the people of Dyke and our courts, many of them already understand, uh, what their options are for hiking or trail through this town. I don't think we need forty grand for that, and no doubt, but the trails that we currently have are mostly to reuse. So until it could show some really definite, uh, meaningful use of the existing trails, I think it's outrageous to ask for another forty thousand dollars from the tax maker's making.
Phil Metrick. Gray shirt.
Sprite shirt. Everything was great, man. I don't have, got really good.
Kevin Smith, eleven forty-seven Center Street, chairman of Parks and Recreation. Um, Dyke Trails Committee is not required to, to directly work under Parks and Recreation as a subcommittee.
He speaks to motion, please.
Just wanted to clarify that. Um, this is a unique opportunity, like Mr. Cavalllo was saying, to provide money to just explore this. Um, if this does happen, I personally have looked into it with them. Um, there is a ton of grant money that will allow for a lot of accessible trails throughout town. Um, we don't have a lot of opportunities for individuals with disabilities to traverse or enjoy nature throughout our town. The trails that we do have are mostly grassy or dirt, um, so this, in my opinion anyway, is a good opportunity for us to be able to explore expanding our accessible trails throughout town.
Thank you. Further discussion? Fisher.
Jonathan Yelch, twenty-two, one, four, zero. Um, not only are cavernous city, you guys seem to be thinking alike. Having said that, um, with this proposal on behalf of the commissioner of disability and as a, as a resident, both, I will say, first of all, this is similar to what many residents here have used in other communities which reveal trails, if ultimately when it's done so far, it will be paved part of the street, part of the, um, different access points, different areas. What I think is important from my perspective is that Dyke, according to the US Census, has a minimum, and I use the term minimum, of six point two percent of its population are people with some sort of an obvious disability. This isn't the most recent census. That means there's almost six hundred residents in this community who self-identify with disability. It's actually probably a much higher figure. Having said that, too, that gives six hundred residents the opportunity to potentially participate in these new paved, potentially widened trails that are gonna meet the ADA requirements state for, by the state and by the federal government. Part of their grant purpose for funding these trails eventually, the money doesn't come from the town. Money is not eventually gonna have to be from free cash from the town necessarily, as we're discussing here in time. Once this study is done, they use this to apply to state, federal government, and to other sources for grants for the trails. But again, it opens up the, the, the system that we have to make it fully accessible for at least six hundred residents of our community. Thank you.
Further discussion? All left over here? Exercise.
Thank you, Matt Kelly, Spotters Council, White. Um, I just, as an outsider and newcomer, um, I just wanted to acknowledge the argument to the gentleman in the back, that everyone who lives in Dyke knows where trails are and knows where to go. Well, not everybody is just from here, um, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing that Dyke is growing, it's a good thing that people wanna move here. Um, with two small children myself, it'd be nice to have safe places to take my kids that were accessible, not just for those with and without disabilities, but, uh, for growing families as well. Uh, knowing just my background and my profession, uh, is the amount makes sense for, for a study to be conducted, and again, to, to pool the resource, the wealth of experience, knowledge in this room to break grants and to get that government funding, we have to have this information, and I think this is a great, uh, a great effort, and a lot of the reason why I'm going to this town. Thank you.
Further discussion from the floor?
Susan Loren, fourteen seventy-five Center Street. We have a amount here of forty thousand dollars. I cannot see and associate and compare with this. How do we have this amount of forty thousand dollars?
Can you speak to where the forty thousand dollars was derived from?
Yes, um, within the committee, we had, uh, the, the, uh, places that do this professional engineering parts that do this sort of thing, and they gave us a rough order of magnitude of what would cost.
We referred to that a rough order of magnitude of what would cost, uh, and based on that rough order of magnitude, we decided to put it in here in an amount not to exceed, uh, forty thousand dollars. So that's actually, that's our topic.
Thank you.
Not to exceed, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Mayor of Parks and sixteen, Andrew. Will you add questions to the gentleman? If the town, if we vote this evening to expend forty thousand dollars on this, on this study, will this study complete the intermediate connection from the Somerset Trail that was established in August, Tom? Because this trail from I am state is all the way up to one oh three. Am I correct in saying that?
So what does, what is the start point, end point of this current, the engineering study? That, is that only the question?
The question was, will this be the final intermediate? Will it complete trail from one oh three to part of, all the way to one oh three and next Somerset and to Tom's?
Um, I, I think I know what you're asking, so I'll, I'll address what I think you're asking. So the, the intent is that the town of Dyke becomes part of the, uh, Ton, uh, Ton River Trail. Thank you. I always wanna say Ton Path, right, but that's actually Ton River. Uh, Ton River Trail. Ton River Trail, for those of the unfamiliar, is a twenty-two-plus mile multimodal, uh, trail network. And so what that means for this particular article specifically is we are trying to connect Dyke to Ton and Somerset, um, uh, via Pleasant Street. Uh, so I don't know where one oh three falls in there, um, but I think that's what you meant, all the way down south. And then the intent is to figure out the best possible way to get across the Three Mile River into, into the city of Ton. Uh, there's a lot of distractions in the way, but we wanna figure out the best route for, uh, coming off that way, so that's, that's.
Back break.
Yes, upon that, South Street, thank you. The rest of the issue is, uh, forty thousand dollars to expand.
Can you please speak again, please?
Try to continue with just the line you were asking, to do the completion. Going forward, are you aware of the town of Dyke, the people that own property on Somerset on Pleasant Street? Do you go up and able? One decision in court of the railroad that refuses to let anyone cross that path, of course, for the business. I, to fund this, to let this, to address, to, 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 to,
Mr. Cavalllo, speak up, please.
May, may I address that?
Yes.
Um, yes, we are aware of that, uh, situation, and, uh, the, the property you speak of specifically, Mr. Mallow and, and, and Hart Street, yeah, um, we're not, the intent is to go, to take this into Hart Street. We talked about Somerset Avenue, which is a, 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 so, this doesn't, talk, talk about that. But I, I do wanna mention that we, we're looking at all options, but the intent is to go out to that property. We're well aware of that situation. Thank you.
Hi, George Bronte, two-three-four Lincoln Avenue. Um, I am a resident in town who thoroughly enjoys the Sweet Knolls Trail area. Um, we also, my family thoroughly, thoroughly enjoys the Dyke Trail, uh, on Cape Cod, and having a trail like that in Dyke, I think would be really beneficial for the whole community. Um, I'd like to go back to the words of, I believe it was the ADA Commissioner, who mentioned the accessibility and the need for us to address this in town, and I'd like to point out that the way I'm thinking about this, and I own the real estate business, and I also teach real estate at college in Boston, the way I'm looking at this is the forty thousand dollars, if that, if that expense will get us access to state-funded grants of a much greater amount, then it's probably short dollars to address potentially some ADA issues as well as make the, just, the, the recreational aspects of the town better. It's, it's probably worth it to get access to those grants because it's required for the grants. I'd also just like to address, just in my experience, forty thousand dollars seems to me like it's about the right amount for a feasibility study, based on the work that I do in my town.
Any further discussion from the floor? From the lecture? Mr. Rosso?
So here we go, here. I wanna say something about Bronte, but I'll hold back. Uh, our ADA coordinator there said it wouldn't come out, the people in Dyke wouldn't pay for it. Well, we start by paying for it with the forty grand, and I pay state taxes, and I pay federal taxes, so I don't know what you're going to for the grants, but I'm pretty sure I'll pay it for it. So, uh, if, if somebody is new to town and they're not familiar with the existing trails, you, you, and you pointed out to us, should do a little more homework. You can do a little more homework.
You speak to the.
We're happy to help you with it. So, you know, once again, we're all down this, this, uh, trail, and as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I'd like to have these things in place, but I don't like to have that at cost that's unreasonable to the residents of Dyke. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
I'm gonna call for a re-vote on that until I call for a hand vote. All in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
I'm gonna call for a hand vote, please.
What do you mean, recording this?
I mean, the distance, the number of minutes we have, thirty-five, eighty-six, it's not moving now, and I'm just hoping it's maybe, it's going to record on.
Well, I started off recording mine, so.
Alright. Same deal. All in favor, please raise your hands and keep them up. All in favor? All opposed, please raise your hands and keep them up. Article eleven. Yes, sixty-seven. No, sixty-four. Article eleven carries. Article twelve. Article twelve. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash, a sum of money not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars for engineering and design services for the Pleasant Street Bridge reconstruction project. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with a finance committee recommendation. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Motion carries. Article fifteen. Fourteen, article fourteen, my apologies.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash in amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for planning and permitting costs to redesign the driveway and traffic pattern and add a maintenance facility at Dyke Elementary School to Dyke Middle School.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Why aren't we a hand vote? I'm going to ask all the yes votes to stand up, and then all the no votes following to stand up. All the yes votes, votes, please stand up. Thank you. Did you see it? All the no votes, please stand up. And the checkers, please come forward, any other hand vote. All right. All in favor, please raise your hand and keep your hand in the air. All opposed, please raise your hands and keep them in the air. Article fourteen, yes. Count of fifty-seven, no, seventy-one. Article fails to pass. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate a sum of twenty-eight thousand dollars to be expended for following public health nerves in the amount five thousand dollars, budget reconciliation in the amount one thousand dollars, backfill the reserve account in the amount ten thousand dollars, public buildings in the amount five thousand dollars, additional insurance costs in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Additionally, to transfer from free cash a sum of ten thousand dollars to replenish the public buildings account. And finally, to transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from other sources within the budget, accounting personnel account to the accounting expense account in the amount of five thousand dollars. And ambulance, from the ambulance billing fund to the ambulance billing fees in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Motion made, motion made and seconded.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommendations, Board of Selectment recommendation.
Board of Selectment recommends.
Board of Selectment recommendation. Any discussion? White, special, please, wait. Can you please hold one second, Kim.
I, Mr. Brendan, in this forum, Lincoln Avenue, I thought you had said public buildings five thousand. It listed as fifteen. I just wanted to double check that that was the right take.
So it's fifteen thousand dollars in total, based on the motion I was read, five thousand from raising appropriate, ten thousand from free cash. Right. So fifteen thousand in total. Further discussion? Back right here.
I just have a little more idea. I'm just curious as to why, because of all these little things being added now, instead of at the end, you're telling me, why are these little pieces? Especially things like going to reserve funds and stuff, which that doesn't make sense to me. Why is it being done now? That's my basic question.
So in terms of the reserve fund, we can pull money out of the reserve fund to pay for expenses that have come up during the course of the year. We are now replenishing that fund. It's something that we do at special town meeting once we get our free cash certified. There's really a procedural thing at this point in those regards. In terms of the, uh, the fund or account to account transfers, that's just an accounting aspect. So, you know, for example, in the accounting personnel account, we actually didn't hire our town accountant during, at the beginning of the fiscal year, our new town accountant. So there's salary that's in the personnel budget that is needed in the expense budget because we might identify additional expenses that are going to be coming up in the upcoming year. So if there, those are big, these are like, this is like that. We will be across keeping, um, article. Is that coming?
Will say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate the sum of twelve thousand dollars to be expended by the Board of Health to funding hazardous waste disposal day in the town.
Motion made and seconded, is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectment recommendation?
Board of Selectment recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both Finance and Board of Selectment recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to the capital stabilization account.
Next second.
Motion made and seconded, is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectment recommendation?
Board of Selectment recommends.
Would anybody like to speak to this motion?
With the, with the free cash from, from last year, one of the things, we've got a lot of projects coming up in the town. Having the capital stabilization account is going to help in funding some of those items as they come up. The two hundred thousand dollars will replenish a hundred thousand dollars that was taken out last year to buy a fire truck. And then add a hundred thousand on top of that to put these capital stabilization accounts, it would be at nine hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. Just a note, fire, any further discussion? As this is funding the capital stabilization account, part of two-thirds majority vote. Two-thirds vote, majority vote. Any discussion on the floor? Back right corner. Fire to the two hundred thousand?
Fire to the two hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents. Nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote. If there's any question, then we'll call for a hand vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the stabilization account.
Motion, motion made and seconded, is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends a hundred fifty thousand dollars to transfer for free cash.
Is there a Board of Selectment recommendation?
Board of Selectment recommends to transfer free cash in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion's made and seconded with a Finance Committee recommendation of transferring a hundred fifty thousand dollars from free cash and a Board of Selectment recommendation with a two hundred thousand dollar transfer from free cash. Someone like to speak to this motion?
We, uh, with, with the free cash that we have from last year, obviously the stability of the town budget, the stabilization fund is very important. The state likes for towns to get to ten percent. With, with either version, the hundred fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, the town's fund would be at roughly seven point one to seven point two percent of an annual budget. Our, our thinking as a Finance Committee was to lower amounts because once you put money into stabilization account, it also takes a two-thirds vote to take it back out of the town where it's needed. Whereas if it stays in free cash from now until the next time that we would have a special town meeting, which maybe would be prior to an annual town, you could move the free cash with a majority vote so it keeps some options in case an emergency comes up during the rest of this, this fiscal year. So that's, that's why we, we suggested a hundred fifty to put the balance in the stabilization account at definitely one point six million.
Can you listen?
Yes, thank you. For all my campaigns, I've heard it over and over again that this town needed to conserve revenue, that they needed to plan projects. And if there is a real emergency, I am sure that two-thirds people would gladly vote to transfer the funds. With that in mind, I strongly support the two hundred thousand that the Board of Selectment is requesting. It's one of those things, if you have it, you spend it. If you don't, then you find other ways to, to, um, get rid of the problem that you identified at the time. Thank you.
Discussion on the floor.
Robert Renden, twenty-three, sixty-three, C. U. I, I prefer the, if you have it, you spend it. Our department had, um, we wouldn't have the free cash we have today if our department had supported the frugal spend drifts, whatever you want to call it. But quite honestly, they, they've helped this town, made a whole bunch of money. Because they budget and then they don't spend all their budget. It may not be the greatest thing in the world, but they are playing for, 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 for what has been done historically. And we tend to support that as Finance Committee. Do not spend. And that's why we have free cash at this point in time. Keeping it in, in free cash keeps us pretty liquid.
Mr. Moderator, I, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to amend to two hundred thousand dollars.
Can you please state the motion, how you...
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash a sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account.
There's a motion made and seconded to amend the motion on the floor. To read. Move the town vote to transfer free cash a sum not to exceed two...
My motion was to transfer for free cash a sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account.
Yes, so there's a motion on the floor to amend the mo- there's a motion on the floor to amend the motion stated in article eighteen to vote to transfer for free cash a sum not to exceed two hundred thou- two hundred thousand dollars to stabilization account. That's the second. Hold on a moment. So the motion on the floor is the amendment motion. We will first discuss the amendment as stated now. So there's, as stated, the amendment is to modify it from one hundred fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Back right corner.
Was the money coming from the free...
Free cash.
Cash anyway? So the amendment is kind of the same...
The amendment, the mo- so I might just... The amendment on the floor was initially made, the mo- motion on the floor is initially for one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The amendment on the floor is for two hundred thousand dollars. So it's raising it, it's still coming out of free cash.
Same, same amendment.
Same amendment. Further discussion? Back right? The motion on the floor was initially for one hundred fifty thousand dollars made by the Finance Committee. The Board of Selectment is now amending. The motion on the floor was initially for one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The warrant did read two hundred thousand dollars, but the motion was for one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, in terms of the other guy, Mr. Sixty, I don't know if this is just a point of order, but I want to be sure that, I don't know. I want to be sure that the motion on the floor by Mr. Selectman Paul, the wording was, do not use, not to exceed, am I correct? Correct, so the motion was read on the floor again, it said to, not to exceed. So I want to make sure the proper wording is correct in the floor's motion.
Two hundred thousand?
No, 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 it's not the question, the question is about money.
Can you re- please restate your amendment, I just...
Can I, yes. I move that the town vote to transfer free cash a sum of, of two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account. I didn't say a sum of...
Confirm.
I said a sum of...
The motion, amended motion on the floor is I move that town vote to transfer free cash a sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account. Any further discussion on the amendment? The amendment, first we'll go to vote, requires a majority vote. We are voting on the amendment only at this given time. All in favor to amend the motion on the floor? Please say aye. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passed. Any discussion on the amendment motion as put forward now?
The overall two-sixty-five on Pleasant Street, can, can you just tell me how much we currently have in free cash before we move anything?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to follow. Uh, town administrator, the, uh, free cash balance that was certified, uh, like by the Department of Avenue about a week and a half ago with one point, one-point-seven-two, two million dollars.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'm Lee Callahan, three-fourteen Lincoln Ave. Could I just ask for some clarification on why the selectmen and the finance committee differ on this? I'm just confused.
So.
I'll get someone to speak to that.
Uh, it, it, just real quick, it's, it's our, our opinion from finance committee standpoint is we'd rather see the money in free cash as opposed to the stabilization account. Because even when there, there should come a time during the course of the fiscal year, we would have to have another special town meeting. It only takes a majority mo- vote to move the money from free cash to the proper account. Whereas if, if you're gonna do it from stabilization account, you're still gonna have a special town meeting, but you need two-thirds of the people who attend to move that money. So that's it. More flexible. That's it.
As I said at the last board of selectmen meeting, my understanding, other communities, that it is good municipal finance practice, that in your regular stabilization account, you maintain a sum of ten percent of your total budget, which my understanding is that by just thirty-four million dollars, our goal should be three-point-four million, or not even close to that. Fifteen percent is through the standards of many communities, the goal of the capital stabilization account. We're not even close to that either. Good planning, because we have a lot of bills coming down the road. We need to save those, because I'm sure the priorities of many of you are, have yet to be discussed tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I, I could be wrong on the numbers, but I believe our annual budget is something like twenty-two or twenty-one. Yeah, so I think if the residents were to approve the transfer of the full two-hundred thousand, I think we would be closer to that ten percent. We would be at one-point-nine or about two million dollars between both of the accounts.
So the, right now, we have one-point-four-five in the step capital, in the stabilization account. So with the one-hundred-and-fifty, we'd be at one-point-six, which is roughly seven-point-one percent of the budget. At the two-hundred thousand, we'd be at one-point-six-five, which is roughly seven-point-two percent of the budget. Free cash at the end of tonight, if all the articles were cast as they're proposed, with this extra fifty thousand going into stabilization, free cash would be at three-hundred-and-eighty thousand. At the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it would be four-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor? In the middle. Can't hear your part.
I just want to understand something. The money in the stabilization account and the other accounts in the free cash account represent tax dollars that we have paid and that you are parking in some account, correct? So, in fact, it represents an overtaxation of the population. And it, are you looking at tax, is there a question? That's my question. Are those, are those dollars representing tax dollars that you pay in your parking account?
The stabilization account, that's what it was. No.
Further discussion on the floor? It's clear.
Free cash represents what's left in the budget. But a large pot of free cash is also local receipts, building permits, other kind of fees. The excise tax you pay on vehicles and boats and things like that that stays in the town. So all of the money that gets certified as free cash is not left over in the budget. It's the thing called local receipts. What's in the stabilization account, whether it's capital or regular, those are like the town's savings accounts. That's why you're meeting on this article and discussing it tonight. There is money available and you're being asked, recommended, do you want to put some money into our savings account? You vote money for capital stabilization, and this is now just a stabilization account. So no, it's not all tax money, and not be weak, all of us have not been overtaxed.
Further discussion on the floor? It's a reminder, this requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article nineteen.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from PEG access funds a sum not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars to be expended by the building commissioner to purchase two mini-split HVAC heat pump systems for the lower-level cable television office in town hall.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends to transfer from the PEG access fund.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen takes the same recommendation.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Right? Please stand up, please. Thank you. Is that gonna be a local DITON contractor that's gonna be able to put those in?
Uh, good question. We follow the state uniform procurement requirements, but the last two installs have been done by local DITON contractor. So we hope that the same is here.
Further discussion on the floor?
Ron Murray, no, twenty-three twenty Pleasant Street. Uh, question, was the air handler unit in that building replaced about five to seven years ago with the right one? And if so, why would anybody be using this one?
Your spot, please.
There are four units in the town hall building. Uh, two replaced about a year and a half ago. One was replaced earlier tonight, uh, by a vote of you, and the last one is still functional. The cable room is separated from the rest of town hall. We just invested, I don't know the exact number, but I think it was thirty thousand dollars in equipment. Um, and I cannot regulate the temperature in that room because of the way the ductwork was installed back when that building was constructed in the eighties. So although the units are new, I agree, the building is running more efficiently. I cannot regulate the temperature in that room, and I don't want to damage the equipment. So by putting these units in, we'll be able to separate that room from the rest of the building with a high-efficiency heat pump setup. They'll be running, uh, you know, cheap as possible. We actually have a whole town hall. They run great. So that's the reason we're doing this. We do have new equipment with this purchase. Every one of the units in town hall will be new except for the one in the vault, which doesn't get much use, and therefore it's lasting longer than the others.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty.
Mister Moderator, see that the town vote to transfer from free cash a total sum of sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be expended by the highway superintendent to purchase one bid-mounted boom mower?
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. I'm sorry. Motion carries. Article twenty-one.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of ninety thousand dollars and to raise the broker rate a sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for a total of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to these other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for retirees' healthcare and life insurance benefits.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion ma- motion made and seconded with recommendation by both the finance and board of selectmen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-two.
Mister Moderator, wow, I'm sorry. Mister Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of six thousand dollars to be used for public utilities and reasons. New England Power Company, Massachusetts Electric Company, and EverSource Gas Company as required by the Department of Revenue for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded by both, and recommended by both the finance and board of selectmen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-three.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of eight thousand dollars to be used for assistance for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three certification revaluation of real estate and commercial property in town.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded and recommended by both the finance and board of selectmen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm gonna call for a stand vote, see if I can count it that way. All in favor, please stand. Thank you. All opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-three fails to pass. Article twenty-four.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of sixty-four thousand dollars to be expended by the police chief in the purchase of one fully-equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, control rifle, radio antenna, and any accessories relative thereto.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Can I ask for the floor to be a little quieter? It's like really, people couldn't hear their motion behind them, so that's, I read it to get, be sure we got it. Um, motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Article twenty-five.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of.
Please hold. Guys, I can't, I literally, when you talk, I cannot hear on the floor. That goes sideways. Please.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of three thousand dollars to be expended by the town clerk to purchase dog licensing software.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Article twenty-six.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars expended by the police department to purchase twenty-two body-worn cameras and all necessary equipment related to implementation of the body-worn camera policy. Finance committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee recommends. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-seven.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars to be expended by the town clerk to purchase four new ballot scanners, accessories, technical support, and implementation services.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both the finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? The question was whether they made by the Dominion Company, and the answer was no. Any further discussion? Harsh.
These are needed, and I believe it was due to the number of people, and we added another precinct. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, thank you. It's twofold. We're going from two to three precincts. So for that reason there, we need more equipment to handle the more precincts. Our equipment's also approaching twenty years old. Next year will be twenty years old. Almost antique, our clothing equipment. You can't get parts for them. What we have is, if they break, there's no way to service them. Um, so we need new equipment for that reason, and there's only two companies that make them. One has the mini parts and one doesn't.
Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-eve.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars to be expended by the town clerk and town treasurer to purchase two laptops with docking stations and one printer for use in shared counter space at the fully renovated offices of the town clerk and town treasurer and town hall.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both the finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? Motion made in seconded with both the finance and board of selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-nine. Article twenty-nine. Article thirty. Article thirty. Article thirty-one. He moved on on article thirty-one.
Article thirty-one. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote according to Massachusetts General Laws, Section one thirty-nine, Chapter one forty, to mentor town bike dog license fees as presented in Article thirty-one of the special town meeting tomorrow.
Motion made in seconded. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation? Motion made in seconded with a board of selectmen recommendation is the non-financial article does not require finance committee recommendation. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-two. Motion made in seconded. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Is there a planning board? Nope, article thirty-two, I'm sorry. Is there a planning board recommendation? Planning board recommends? Article thirty-two is made in seconded with both the board of selectmen and planning board recommendation. Any discussion?
Thank you. Uh, Bob Perry stands on drive. Uh, on the meeting we had the twenty-third of last month, I brought up a point, and I'd like it, uh, I'd like to bring it up again. It says in the last sentence of that, uh, motion, the Board of Health shall promulgate regulations governing said process for approving and inspecting residential general as so defined in accordance with the law of Massachusetts laws. There needs to be within those, um, provisions, um, a notification of a potter's. Okay, so a potter's need to have a say in how this, uh, or what goes on at the property that evokes them, not just the Board of Health and the out of control office. Thank you. Somebody speak to that?
The process of writing the regulation related to that, to, uh, to answer the question. Uh, in the regulation, there'll be a requirement for hearing and notification sent out to the body on properties. The hearing will be held by the Board of Health, at no charge versus the charge you have to incur if you went for a special permit through the, uh, the Northern Board of Appeals. So basically, with this article, there's remove that requirement for the special permit, which somewhere around seven hundred and fifty dollars right now. The only expense would be a butter notification, and we plan on doing that in the regulations by regular mail with a specific mailing, which will probably cost about one dollar to notify each barter, one dollar each barter, so, uh, depending on how many way you are. And that's the only cost. So it removes requirements for residential town.
Back right corner?
Bob Adams, I'll shoot back. Uh, as a former member of the Zoll World Computers, uh, there's nothing here specifies any of the requirements that will be taken out and from the original, uh, bylaw. Uh, there's nothing that specifies, uh, how many ages will be allowed, or the size of what is going to be allowed. In the long run, Mr. Perry said there's nothing, no provisions in there for no petition to be allowed in this present form on our post.
Further discussion? Would you like to speak to it?
The regulations that have been written, uh, which probably will be in the next week or two, uh, we'll be getting input from the out of control office, the building commissioner, the town administrator, town clerk. This article was written by all four of us. So as we proceed through this, uh, there will be accountability of the owners and trying to protect your neighbors. If you live in a village, where you have a five thousand, probably less than five thousand square foot block, um, we try to protect those people, so yes. And the answer to the other question about, it doesn't say anything about the use. Table of Use Regulations is where the change basically will be made. Uh, right now, it says it requires a special permit. So when that is changed to reflect this amendment, it will no longer be required on the Table of Use Regulations to require a special permit, so.
Please, any further discussion on this motion for someone who hasn't spoken to it yet?
Robert Woods, one fifty-eight, J Street. I'd just like to say that this article has been worked on and discussed and gone over with my own phone for the last couple of years. We've had public carers. We've had nobody really to show up to any public carers, but they could advertise. Many of you know that we've had a serious tragedy, redelco, in, in a kennel that did not have a license. And if you look at the bylaw, the way it's written, if you wanted to get a kennel license now, it cost you probably over a thousand dollars. Am I right in this class?
Correct.
And how much would it cost now?
Now, how many dollars are on the kennel?
Yes, sir. About twenty-five dollars. So, you know, if, if this bylaw does not work out, we can always come back and change it. But we really have worked tirelessly. Uh, I'm on plenty of audio, and we recommend these bylaws, and we review them. And I am asking you to vote yes or no to that, thank you.
Further discussion?
Robert Brandon, twenty-three, sixty-three Cedar Street. Um, I just have a problem voting for or against a, um, bylaw change that has regulations in there. Reference to regulations that have yet to be written, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion made in second on the floor to table. It's a non-discussion motion. It's a non-discussion motion. All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm gonna ask everyone to stand up. I'm gonna ask for a stand vote. A motion to table requires a two-thirds majority, two-thirds. Vote. All in favor, please stand. Thank you, all opposed, please stand. I need a handover, please. Checkers, please come forward. So there's a point on the floor about the ten o'clock to consider adjournment. We're gonna take this handover, and then we'll manage the consideration of adjournment. So to confirm, this is the motion to table, required to two-thirds pass. All in favor, please raise your hand, keep your hands in the air, please. Thank you, all opposed. Raise your hand to hold them up, please. [inaudible] [inaudible] Motion to table, article thirty-two. We had a total vote of one hundred and sixteen requiring a two-thirds majority, a two-thirds vote. Yes on the motion to table, seventy-seven. No, thirty-nine. Motion carries. To table, required exactly seventy-seven votes. Motion carries. Article thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator. I'd like to motion that we relax, that we extend this meeting to eleven o'clock.
So as we initially had a motion on the floor, or are on the floor to adjourn at ten, or consider adjourn at ten, there's now a motion on the floor to extend from ten to eleven. Motion made in seconded. It's a non-discussion motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend General Laws into add a new article on establishment of commission disability as outlined in Article thirty-three of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty.
Motion made in seconded, is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Motion made in seconded with board of selectmen recommendation. Would you like to speak to this motion? Motion made in seconded with board of selectmen recommendation. Would you like to speak to the motion? Is that what you want to restate?
That's thirty-three.
Yes, we are on thirty-three. Would you like, did you? Would, would you like the motion restated? Would you like to speak to the motion? Please. Bring the microphone over.
Captain Hale, to what for this article? I am the disabilities coordinator for the town of Dyneham. And so that everybody gets this clear of what this motion is, we have a disabilities commission in town of Dyneham which was formed this past fall, prior to winter, starting in September. In order to have a commission of disability, the state, the Mass Office of Disability, requires that we have bylaws. The bylaws that we're asking you to adopt are, in essence, the template that's provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the town of Dyneham for the purposes of having a disabilities commission. There is nothing in this bylaw, from my perspective, anyway, um, that would be confusing or complex or difficult. But it allows the Dyneham Commission of Disability to advise and support all of the towns departments and the commissions and committees in the town. And that would be for all of the different titles that are required under, uh, ATM law for state federal purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Hale. Further discussion? Back right corner? Are there any costs associated with this motion?
Yes, there's no.
There's no cost associated with this motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to enter into a pilot of GHTG eight zero three LLC of Dover, Delaware, for the principal place of business at five nine three five airport Rose Street two ten, Mississippi, Ontario, L four D, one third of S, Canada, as presented in Article thirty-four of the special town meeting warrant of November first, November second.
Motion made in seconded. Is there a board of selectmen recommendation?
We have no recommendations.
Would you like to speak to this motion? Score. Sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, no, we're not, we're not ready to make a recommendation on this one tonight. I'm gonna make a motion to table, listen.
Motion made in seconded to table. Article thirty-four as written. It's a non-discussion motion. All in favor of the motion to table? Opposed? Two-thirds majority carries. Article thirty-four is tabled. Article thirty-five. I got the motion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to see the town vote to include for Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, excuse me, Section thirty-eight H, to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement, with ISM Solen Dyten III, LLC of Arizona, with the principal place of business at forty-nine hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand, Scottsdale, Arizona, for its assigned for a period of twenty years and to approve said agreement under the ISM Solen Dyten III LLC of Arizona, with the principal place of business at forty-nine hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand. Scottsdale, Arizona, for its assigned to pay the town some money for a year relative to a fifty-eight point seven eighty parcel of land located at twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street Dyten. located at twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street, Dyton, Mass. Oh two seven one five, map twenty-three Law ten related to construction and operation of photo-volted solar facility with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately two point eight megawatts N W, alternating current AC. Set tax agreement on file, and the town clerk's office ought to take any action relative to that. Listen, Mr. Moderator, I have some amendments to this that relate to the map plot and the number of acres.
Motion made and seconded on the floor. Are you amending your motion? Are you making the?
I want to make an amendment to what was just read as the initial motion because there are.
Can you just read, you don't need to amend, just read what you want.
Alright, so try what I just said.
Yes.
Alright, try it again. Mr. Moderator, I move, I move that the town vote to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with ISM Solidaity three, LLC of Arizona, as presented in Article thirty-five of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty-one, and amended as follows. See if the town will vote that includes Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with ISM Solida, Phase two, Dyton, three, LLC of Arizona, with a principal place of business at forty-nine hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand, Scottsdale, Arizona, are its assigned for a period of fifteen years and to approve said agreement under which ISM Solida, Phase two, Dyton, three, LLC of Arizona, with a principal place of business at forty-nine hundred North Scottsdale Road, Suite five thousand, Scottsdale, Arizona, are its assigned to pay to the town a sum of money per year relative to a thirty point six acre parcel of land located at twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street, Dyton, Mass. Zero two seven one five. Map twenty-one, plot four, Phase two, related to the construction and operation of photo-volted solar facility with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately two point eight megawatts N W, alternating current AC. Set tax agreement on file at the town clerk's office.
Second. Motion made and seconded as read on the floor. Any discussion?
Yes. For informational purposes, excuse me, for informational purposes, this is a fifteen-year pilot agreement. The total amount of money that the town will receive over that time period is six hundred and ten thousand, four hundred dollars. This is a front-end loaded agreement, which means in twenty twenty-two, the tax payment to the Town of Dyton will be sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. For the initial ten years, each year, the amount of the tax payment will decrease. At near ten, twenty thirty-one, the payment will be forty-nine thousand. For the remaining five years, it will continue to decrease so that in twenty thirty-six, the final payment will be nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
We're just confirming the other right on record, that's all. So motions made and seconded with discussion. Any further discussion on this motion? We're starting the form right here, please.
Phil Moore, eighteen thirty-five, Seventh Street. First of all, I'd like to say, I think this, I'm right over this agreement, and I think it's a great agreement. I'm totally in favor of it, and I'm thankful for all the work that people, especially Mr. Lott has put into this. However, I do take exception to the way it is worded. And if you could ask a quick question for me, is, is comments made on the floor binding in any way?
Comments made on the floor, so comments made on the floor are put into record.
But they're not binding, in other words, they're not part of the law, correct?
No.
So my issue with this is that this, as worded, and other similar things pilot agreements as worded, the motion is basically open-ended permission for the Board of Selectmen to negotiate any kind of contract they want in order to, to create pilot agreement. And I agree that the, I've seen the pilot agreement, and I think it's an excellent thing for the town, but that agreement is not specifically referenced in the motion. And that, I take exception to. I'd like to see either the actual agreement to be part of the motion or some sort of limits or boundaries applicable on what can be negotiated by the town. Thank you.
Should I speak to that?
The basic pilot agreement that is being presented to you, that you voted on, back in June, and a couple others, everyone gets the same agreement. This agreement was drafted with, working with Attorney Costa at A&amp;A. I worked with him over a period of time because we wanted to treat all proponents of solar farms equally, all the benefits to the town are the same. There isn't negotiation, per se, of the pilot agreement. When somebody wants to have a pilot agreement, they give them this form with blanks. They're told to fill in the blanks. That relates to their name, their address, their acreage, the megawatts, and things of that nature, and how many years. The reason we do that is we treat everybody fair. Everyone is told upfront, Dyton front loads against pilot agreements because we want that money upfront as near as you can. The panels produce the most electricity when it ran new, so as over the years, the production declines, so do the payments. I will tell you this also, this agreement is based on the tax case, excuse me, the court case that the Town of Dyton won against a solar developer who was trying to include other things in the pilot agreement, such as real estate taxes. We'll refer to that at the minute. When Judge Malloy issued that decision, he made it very clear about what the Board of Selectmen can do and what they can't do. The Board of Selectmen does not negotiate a pilot agreement. The pilot agreement that we have has already been approved in its basic order. When somebody comes in, they contact the Board of Assessors and it's determined what the total taxes. And we say, how many years? We talk fifteen or twenty. We don't go beyond twenty, or at least we have so far. So it's not a negotiation. Every time somebody comes in, we have to stop, but that is not the case. When I reference real estate taxes, the six hundred and ten thousand I mentioned is only the personal property taxes. This particular solar farm will be taxed, excuse me, the owner of the property will be taxed roughly nineteen thousand dollars in commercial real estate taxes. Their previous one was around five thousand. It's roughly a net gain of fourteen, five thousand. There's roughly a fourteen thousand dollar increase in what they're gonna pay in real estate taxes because the property they previously committed a, from the chapter sixty-one A, tax classification. So pilots own personal property, which is the, all those panels and wires and all those other things you see up there. But it is not open-ended. It follows very closely the information we have in the, uh, decision that was made when we were, where we prevail. And that's another reason why we went when they standard basic agreement. What if we say we're gonna negotiate a agreement? How many years do you want this to be? Fifteen or twenty years? Can we tell them upfront? It's gonna be front-end loaded. So I hope that understood. It's not open-ended. When the fifteen years are up, either they decommission and go, or if they're gonna replace equipment, we're gonna start talking again. But unless things have been amended, done to this, and the chapter by the council, this is basic agreement.
Thank you, Score. Further discussion? Back right.
Doug White, four fifty-five, Fourth Street. What happens at the end of the fifteen years? Do we renegotiate another pilot agreement with the upfront loaded taxes? And who's responsible for decommissioning?
Your finance office.
As this thing is maturing, we're all going to have to, both fifteen years and twenty years, S is getting towards the end. We're gonna be talking to have a whole set. Do you intend to replace the panels? If that's the case, there are several things that are gonna happen, and I'm gonna ask the building commissioner to speak on this. But the question would be, are you gonna replace the panels, or are you going out of business? And you will address decommissioning. If they're going to replace panels, the next question is, how many? What's the square feet of that? So I would have to, Andy, I have to speak on that. As far as whether or not another pilot, if they're gonna continue, whether or not another pilot agreement is gonna take place, that's gonna be up to the who is sitting in the Board of Assessors' office and what they're proposing, and what it looks like as far as the tax benefit for the Town of Dyton. And I stress, tax benefit to the Town of Dyton.
That's a great question. So about the time I decide to retire, on the first solar farm, I'll probably need new panels, so I'll probably see it happen. It'll be a process if they decide to keep the solar farm and repan it. There'll be a process through my office to make sure that all of the infrastructure is still intact and adequate, if not upgrades will need to be made. However, years ago, when we were in discussions as a town and planning to figure out how we're gonna perfect these things, I was extremely adamant about requiring a decommission bond to be put up at the beginning of the solar farm. And the planning board has been instrumental in making sure that these solar companies adhered to the requirements and put up the bond in dollars for years from now, whatever it takes to decommission these projects if the solar farm walks away. There is some recoup with some of the materials, obviously, some of the stuff can be recycled. But we, as, as town officials, are doing everything we can to make sure you, the taxpayer, don't bear the burden if these solar farms or solar companies walk away fifteen or twenty years from now. And every solar farm that's gone in has put up a decommissioning bond.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I just wanna add, as Attorney Gate pointed out at the June meeting, pilot agreements are recommended by the Department of Revenue because this way, we know for the next fifteen years, what kind of tax money we're gonna get. We don't have to go through revaluation on those projects for fifteen years. If we don't have a pilot agreement, they're gonna be valuing it every year, and they have the right to appeal the evaluation to the appellate tax board. There's no appeal, this is approved. This is it for fifteen years. And those rebals will cost extra money, which we obviously don't have to pay.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Rosa.
I'm sorry, my question is, just so much I don't know. So I'm a little interested in how the building inspector gets involved because I sort of thought of his role having to do with buildings that are occupied, that are dwelling, or places of business, as opposed to a, a structure where people really aren't gonna be around during the day. So please enlighten.
So your question?
How is the building, how is this in the swimming of the building inspector?
Why is the building inspector involved on?
On the solar farm, yes.
Why are you involved, sir?
Because the building firm is required to put it in. It's in the building.
Thank you. It's in the building. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article thirty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote will accept that the town roadway known as Sunny Way has presented in Article thirty-six of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty-one. Lady Board recognizes.
Motion made and seconded with a planning board recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends, also.
Motion made and seconded with a planning board and Board of Selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You may ask, please. Article thirty-eight. Thirty-seven. I apologize. Article thirty-seven. Thank you. I did, no, I'm opposed to thirty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote will accept that the town roadway known as Sunny Way has presented in Article thirty-seven of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion made and seconded. Is there planning board recommendation?
Planning board recommends.
Is there Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with both a planning board and Board of Selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You may ask, please. Article thirty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote will accept that the town roadway known as Dyton Woods Road has presented in Article thirty-eight of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a planning board recommendation?
Planning board recommends.
Is there Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded. Planning board and Board of Selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You may ask, please. Article thirty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote will accept that the town roadway known as Dyton Woods Circle has presented in Article thirty-nine of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, twenty twenty-one. Lady Board recognizes.
Motion made and seconded. Planning board recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Planning Board recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You may ask, please. Article forty. Any other business?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pires.
Mr. Moderator, I want to make a motion that we reconsider Article twenty-three.
Motion made and seconded to reconsider Article twenty-three. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded on reconsider Article twenty-three. This is a. There's a motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded to reconsider Article twenty-three. This is a discussion motion. Is there any discussion on the floor? Mr. Glart.
The reason we're asking you to reconsider this motion is we need that eight thousand dollars so that come January first of twenty twenty. that come January 1st of 2022, we will have the consultant we need to help us work on setting the tax rate FY '23. It's done that far in advance. Without the money to do this, we can't work on FY '23 tax rate until next June. It's got to be in the Department of Revenue before that. So I'm asking you to please reconsider the vote and approve the $8,000. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Rosa. We have a valid motion and second on the floor to reconsider. It will go to a vote, it will go to a vote. The motion to reconsider will go to a vote. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Back right corner? Back middle corner? I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry. Why can't you use that?
Why don't you use an in-house assessor to appraise the homes?
So, we're over...
Can anyone hear the fire?
Okay, so as far as I know, the last 35, 36 years, we've been using the same consultant. You need to have a certified consultant to get you down certified. The person that works with us now, and as long as I've been there and beyond, has been doing it prior to him, was a company that used to commit, they hired a company to commit into all evaluations, all inspections, all the FBA. One way or another, we need to be certified through the EOB, by having someone that's certified to do the work. You need to have appraisal license, and that's all of our. So if we don't get this, we don't set a tax rate, and the score is simple.
Further discussion on the floor?
I can say with a step as you like, I can use the...
Bring it here, here, yeah.
Thank you, Tom Vellucci, Commerce Street. Essentially what you're saying is, if you don't get this $8,000, we don't get our property taxes raised next year, we use last year's. There you go!
Oh, boy, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, I don't see any further discussion. Majority vote to reconsider Article 23. All in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Motion fails. Further business? Motion made and seconded to reconsider Article 8. Motion made and seconded to reconsider Article 8, any discussion? I'm sorry, it's back here. There's a valid motion, motion made and seconded to reconsider.
I just want to make sure that I'm over here, just to make sure I understand. So you make, wait until people leave, and then you ask to rehear it? And then you go again? Got it?
There's a valid motion to reconsider on the floor, it's seconded. Any further discussion?
We need to, or it's not, uh-huh. This particular vehicle is going to be used by a local person, a conservation agent, and a health agent, those sort of type of items that... When people are driving onto job sites, no paper, dirt, mud, what's going to happen to a little car, you know, little private vehicle? I don't think, I don't think that vehicle suited for the work that needs to be done. I think we need to reconsider this, and think about ending this at 40 minutes. You know, the shop around us here, it should be, because that's really big. I mean, can you see a little spot car that runs on a job site? It just doesn't make sense.
Further discussion?
The vehicle being proposed to be purchased is an SUV. So I just want that statement for the record. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Commissioner, feel free to correct me. The original vehicle was a hybrid SUV of Ford Escape, and this vehicle is going to be an SUV, a smart car. Thank you.
Further discussion? Excuse me. Top right?
Doug White, 455 Forest Street. Is this vehicle $10,000 more than the original proposed $30,000?
Yes. Gentlemen, the right.
Bill Mallow, 1693 Wellington Street. I just wanted to call back to the previous discussion. Not all of the options appeared yet to be explored, as a reference to the hybrid vehicle only. We had mentioned that we could do a pricing or study on a gasoline vehicle. It was also mentioned that there were other vehicles in town that may be coming available or had been available, but were asked over, that were more affordable. And I'd like for you to think about that when we catch you before on this. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to reconsider Article 8? Yes, this is a motion to reconsider. All in favor of the motion to reconsider Article 8?
Aye!
Opposed? Motion fails. Motion to adjourn. Not discussion motion, all in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?